The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Martin, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Boyd. Twenty present.
Quorum being present. We will be led today in prayer by Reverend John Watson of Maple Temple.
Would I say we'll stand for prayer? We'd like to have a moment of silence for the seventeen students and teachers that were killed by gunmen at the Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida on Wednesday. A quote from the Holy Scripture. "God is our refuge and our strength of every present hell in trouble. Gracious God, heavenly Father, you are the refuge and the strength of your people in every age. And our strength in this chamber, and this, our strength in this chamber at this present hour. We praise in your presence to offer prayer for those who have been devastated recently by tragedy in Florida and also in our local community. Remember those who lost their lives so suddenly. We hold in our hearts the families forever chained by grief and loss. Bring them consolation and comfort. Surround them with strength and love. Bless those who have survived and healed their memories and trauma. May they have the courage to face the days ahead amid all the changes and events of this life. Help us to rest our spirits upon those eternal foundations of truth and love which you have laid. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our community, our city.
Thank you Reverend Watson. We spin with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolution calendar. Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolution calendar.
President, I move for adoption of the courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, and it's taking the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, like to approach the dais. While he's approaching the dais, let's give a round of applause to Alderwoman April Ford Griffin. Farmer Alderwoman, but you're in the chambers today, so welcome
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Today we'll be honoring Elijah Brown. He was a pioneer when it came to the real estate business in seeking the Fair Housing Act and working with all community leaders and politicians in the metropolitan area in the late fifties, sixties, seventies, and eighties. He was a gentleman that helped so many African-American families seek fair housing through our community. Back when it wasn't so popular for black families to move in certain neighborhoods, he fought very diligently to make that happen. So today, we're honoring him for the great work that he did to make so many families happy and their dream homes come true. Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the Board. Mr. Elijah Brown, the founder and owner of Brown Corecamp Realty Company. I was very pleased that their office is located in the Eighteenth Ward, there at Delmar and Walton. What was used to be the old Morocco Candy Company that were used to pass by as children and smell the candy because we certainly couldn't afford it. But he was able to purchase that building and to make it a stellar realty company for the city of St. Louis. His contributions to this city has helped make this a better place to live. He has worked very diligently to end segregation as related to housing in the city, as well as to help the realty industry in the city of St. Louis be more ethnically and culturally friendly to everyone in the city of St. Louis. He was a sharp man, lots of energy, filled with ideas, always moving on the next venture, committed to making sure that things were right no matter what those other people were saying wrong. He was dedicated to ensuring that things would be better. I met him back in the eighties, I believe it was, and he brought to me his idea. He had this big building and they were going to do this to it, and they're going to do that with it, and they were going to have it as also where they have a storage facility. And then he had other ideas about developing housing in the area and establishing this new venture and establishing this new development company. He just went from one thing to the next, and that was to our benefit. That the fact that he could allow himself to feel those ideas and to move on them helped improve not only the Eighteenth Ward, but the city of St. Louis itself. And so then it is an honor to present, he did pass, it is an honor to present in his honor to his daughter, Gail Brown, who is also a very feisty businesswoman and makes sure that things get done, particularly when she looks down over her glasses, we know we're in trouble. She provides the ongoing spirit that her father carried and certainly is within that family. Sometimes spirits are born among families, and we see it from one generation to the next. And this happens to be one of those spirits that's too big to be just in one person in that family. There is a Yoruba tradition in West Africa where they say twins are one spirit too big to be in a single body. Well, certainly, the spirit of your family is too big to have just been in Mr. Elijah Brown, and we see that alive in you. It is our honor to present this resolution in his honor to you, the daughter Gail Brown here this day. Thank you.
President Reed, Alderman Kennedy, and Alderman Williamson. I just want to say thank you and to all the Aldermen here, as well as my professional family here, the St. Louis Realtors. Just want to say that our family, the firm, the associates really appreciate this honor of recognition bestowed upon my father, Elijah Brown. He was a trailblazer, in my opinion, in this city, and he wanted to make sure that people had affordable, decent housing and that they could live wherever they chose to live. And he worked very hard to do that. And so it was very well said by my Alderman, Terry Kennedy. So there's not much more to add. I just want to say thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Also just want to tell you thank you and thanks to your father. You know, people can choose to waste time, they can choose to burn time, but when they choose to invest time, that pays dividends for many years to come. So I am just thankful as a father of four and a resident of the city of St. Louis that your father chose to invest his time. And by choosing to invest his time, he left you ready to go helping to turn our city around. By choosing to invest his time, he has changed minds and attitudes and housing restriction laws and things of that nature that we all enjoy today. So again, let's give her a big round of applause and thank you for everything that your father and family did. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Return our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guest. Alderman from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored special guest today the soon-to-be newest member of the Board of Aldermen, Ms. Annie Rice.
Welcome.
Welcome to the Monkey House.
Any further? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I'd like to have Mr. President for my honored guest, Demetrius Alpha Fred, president of Firefighters Local Seventy-three, and Nathan Lett. Also, Mr. Lou Hamilton from Centric Strategies.
Alderman from the sixth.
Mr. President, I would like to have as my honored guest, Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, my special guest, Mr. Lou Abusi, and Gary Oden with Painters District Council.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Hans, Kevin Haynes, and Shannon Weber from the St. Louis Kansas City Carpenters Regional Council. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Fred Circe from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, up in the balcony, Bob and Christie Unruh of the Ninth Ward, as well as Bob Barker up there, and I'd also like to have Annie Rice as my special guest today, so.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I had a Freudian slip. I introduce Mr. Lou Abusi, who is not here. I meant to introduce Jeff Abusi.
Yeah, we got that. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have with us Mr. Jemmo Tool from the Sheriff's Department, so let's give him a round of applause. Welcome. Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. We're here on February sixteenth. It was on this day in eighteen fifty-eight the first ironing board was patented. That's exciting. And in nineteen thirty-three, when prohibition ended, but most importantly, this is Do a Favor for a Grouch Day. So everyone, let's all be nice to the Alderman from the twenty-second today. Thank you.
All right. Well, Alderman from the eighteenth, recognize on approval of minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the December eighth, February second, and February ninth minutes.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes. I have the following correspondence. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resources Commission. The reappointment of Ken Franklin, who resides in St. Louis County, whose term will expire on October the first, 2020. Reappointment of William Seethoff, who resides in the Seventh Ward, whose term will expire on October the first, 2020. The reappointment of Sheri Wibbenmeyer, who resides in the Twenty-third Ward, whose term will expire on October the first, 2020. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Krusten, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to confirm the mayor's appointments.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, and it's taking the seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city official.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Yes, yes, bills or resolutions. Alderman from the eighteenth, would you like to move your resolution to the regular resolutions calendar?
I wouldn't, Mr. President.
All right. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Resolution two twenty, two eleven, move it to the regular resolutions calendar.
First reading of resolution?
Second reading of resolution.
So noted.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. First, I'd like to move to place Board Bills two forty-eight and two forty-nine on the third reading informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Two forty-eight and two forty-nine to the third reading informal calendar.
Also, Mr. President, having voted on the prevailing side, I would move to reconsider the perfection of Board Bill one ninety-one.
Hold on a second. Two forty-eight, two forty-nine, do you have that, Madam Clerk?
I'm still getting it together. Two forty-eight and two forty-nine. Where are they at?
They're on the third, on the third reading, third reading consent calendar. Two forty-eight and two forty-nine, place it on the third reading informal calendar.
I just suffer roadie, I don't know.
So noted, Mr. President.
All right. So Alderman from the seventh, you're now open to make your motion?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You're now open to make your motion? You were making a motion for Board Bill one ninety-one.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. Having voted on the prevailing side, I have moved to reconsider the perfection of Board Bill one ninety-one.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh that we move to reconsider the vote for Board Bill one ninety-one. It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Twenty-two, I vote one present.
By a vote, you stay in motion with Alderman from the seventh and reconsidered Board Bill one ninety-one. Madam Clerk, place Board Bill one ninety-one on the regular perfection calendar. Alderman from the seventh, would you like to move Board Bill one ninety-one to the perfection informal calendar?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd move to place Board Bill one ninety-one on the perfection informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill one ninety-one from the regular perfection calendar to the perfection informal calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
President, I'd like to move Board Bill two twenty-one from perfection consent calendar to the perfection informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill, Board Bill two twenty-one, Alderman from the sixth, Board Bill two twenty-one. Anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? We will dispense with line items eight through ten. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill two sixty, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and on its establishing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Pernod and Childress, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Pernod at Childress, and regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress at Pernod and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two six one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its recommended by the Tax Increment Financing Commission to amend the city foundry St. Louis redevelopment plan and redevelopment project areas, amending redevelopment plan by combining redevelopment project areas two and three to a new redevelopment project area, revising the boundaries between areas one, redevelopment area one to a new redevelopment area two, changing the use in new redevelopment area two from residential to retail office, revising the financing plan to remove tax abatement as an incentive in redevelopment area two, and activating the new redevelopment area two, establishing the city foundry St. Louis RPA two special allocation fund, making findings with respect there to authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its affirming adoption of city foundry St. Louis RPA two redevelopment plan, RPA two redevelopment area, and RPA two redevelopment project, authorizing execution of redevelopment agreement between the city and FOPA for the city foundry St. Louis RPA two redevelopment project, designating FOPA partners as developer of the RPA two redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two six three, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and on its authorizing execution of a cooperation and a community benefit agreement with Discovery Pier Land Holdings, authorizing reimbursement in accordance with their width and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two six four, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and on its approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four fifty Wisconsin. Board Bill two six five, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, pursuant to ordinance six eight nine three seven, and ordinance authorizing honorary street name Pastor Benny Lee Thompson Senior Avenue to begin at the intersection of Webster and Sheridan Avenue and run east on Sheridan to the intersection of Sheridan and North Garrison. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill two sixty and two sixty-five, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill two sixty-four, and to the Housing Committee, Board Bill two sixty-one, two sixty-two, and two sixty-three. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following Board Bill was reported out of the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill thirty-four Committee Substitute, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Ingracia, Spencer, Martin, Gunther, Green, Cone, and Cone, and on its pertaining to preventing passage to and from a healthcare facility and prohibiting activities near certain facilities containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two four one, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Ingracia, Martin, Spencer, Cone, Vacaro, and Alderman Boyd, and on its pertaining to the collection of administrative citation fines assessed by the Building Commissioner pursuant to ordinance six six eight five seven on buildings or structures within the city which are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city, authorizing the comptroller upon receiving certification of administrative citation fine amounts to cause a special tax bill to be assessed to property owners or if the amount is unpaid for more than one year, authorizing the amount to be added to the annual real estate tax bill, containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two four two, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Ingracia, Martin, Spencer, Cone, Vacaro, and Alderman Boyd, and on its pertaining to enforcement of code violations relating to buildings, structures, and premises, partially repealing and amending Sections eleven of ordinance six six eight five seven, enacting a new subsection C related to the procedures for the collection of administrative citation fines containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
With dispensal line item fourteen, at the request of Alderman from the first, please place Board Bill number two fifty-six on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill two fifty-one, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and on its establishing a two-way stop sign at the intersection of Alfred and Bingham Street, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Alfred Street at Bingham Street and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two five two, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and on its recommended by the Board of Public Service, authorizing two thousand and eighteen St. Louis Works and Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program citywide appropriating five million three hundred thousand dollars from the Street Improvement Fund containing applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and public work emergency clause. Board Bill two five three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its pertaining to parking within the Talmage Residential Parking District, authorizing the traffic administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the Talmage Residential Parking District, authorizing the placement of residential permit parking only signs within the district containing definitions of penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill two four four, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and on its authorizing the honorary street name Bismarck Street, which will begin at the intersection of Barton Street and Seventh Street and run north on Seventh Street to Lamai Street. Board Bill two forty-six, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen Oldenburg, Mohammed, Williamson, Ingracia, Davis, Vacaro, Howard, Murphy, Alderwoman Boyd, and President Reed, and Alderwoman Middlebrook, and on its pertaining to additional sales tax and corresponding use tax established by ordinance seven oh five eight oh prohibiting any special reallocation of the revenue generated by such tax for purposes other than those specified in ordinance seven oh five eight oh, except as approved by the Board of Aldermen in an independent appropriations Board Bill that is independent of the Board's adoption of the city's annual operating plan for the applicable fiscal year. Board Bill two oh seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, and on its approving the dissolution of the East Loop Parkview Gardens Special Business District and the discharge of the members of its Board of Commissioners by repealing ordinance six three six three four. Board Bill one seven two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and on its authorizing directing the mayor and the comptroller to... Board Bill 172, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance authorizing directing the Mayor and Comptroller to execute a form of receipt of and in consideration the sum of $3,500, a quitclaim deed to Botanical Heights Homes, certain city-owned property located in City Block 5114, which property is known by the address of 4223 Gibson. Board Bill 210, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Unportionment, authorizing directing the Director of Airports of the city to execute on behalf of the city consent to assignment by ABM Parking Services Incorporated to ABM Aviation containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 256, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance pertaining to the City of St. Louis Parking Commission and the Administration and Use of the Parking Meter Fund.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill 256.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 256.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, Board Bill 256 simply says that if the court rules in the city's favor on the governance of the parking division, that it will be governed under city parking code currently.
Any further discussion? Any further? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-third that we perfect Board Bill number 256. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. I'm sorry, I don't hear you. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. What was that? Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz.
President.
Alderwoman Boyd. Nineteen, I vote five no votes, three present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second, and perfected Board Bill number 256.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
At the request of Alderman from the twenty-third and the Alderwoman from the first, please place Board Bill number 250 from the third reading consent calendar to the regular third reading calendar. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you have a bill you would like to move from the third reading consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Board Bill 240 as amended to the consent calendar.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 240 as amended from the third reading consent calendar to the regular third reading calendar. So that's 250 and then also 240 as amended.
Okay. Okay, so noted.
Third reading consent. Alderman from the seventh.
Board Bill number 248 and 249, I'd like to have those placed on the informal calendar, please.
We did those earlier. They're on the informal calendar.
Oh, they are? Okay, I apologize.
Yeah. Anything for Madam Clerk? It's been moved. Alderman from the, Alderman from the eighteenth. You recognize on the motion for the third reading consent?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar. There's nothing.
Madam Clerk, third reading consent.
Board Bills, 206, 213, 223, 229, 230, 238, 247, 212 as amended, 181, 205, 214, 218.
228.
I'm sorry, 228, 231, 211. 189 Committee Substitute. 192. That's it.
Alderman from the eighteenth.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Yeah, with all the changes it took the clerk.
I meant it to get those.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent?
I move again that the third reading consent calendar to be adopted.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Kotar.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro.
Aye.
Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Oldenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Twenty-seven, I vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report them grossments.
Board Bill 250, sponsored by Alderman Kotar and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 300 South Broadway.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill number 250.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to third reading, final pass, Board Bill 250.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh and entertain the second, seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth. Any discussion? Alderman, any discussion, Alderman from the seventh?
President, members of the board, Board Bill 250 would propose a tax abatement for a proposed development at 300 South Broadway. Put that in perspective, that is the southeast corner of Clark and Broadway. Currently, it is the site of the headquarters for the St. Louis Community Colleges. It's a building that is not currently on the tax rolls, has a couple dozen employees in there. The community college wishes to consolidate its headquarters on its Forest Park campus. The proposed new building, which would, the redevelopment plan that issued today calls for the demolishing of the existing structure and replacing it with a 33-story high-rise residential market-rate apartment building with roughly 265 apartment units and nine floors of parking and first-floor retail space. This project was in front of the Preservation Board a couple months ago for an initial preliminary review of the demolition. At that time, the Preservation Board approved the demolition with various conditions, including trying to save the facade of the building, the existing building, and also some other issues about wrapping glass all the way around it. We are still exploring those options, but it doesn't appear that those are going to be financially feasible. So if this board bill passes today, which I do hope it does, we're going back to the Preservation Board to talk to them. So don't demolition permit will be issued until the Preservation Board approves of that. And I believe everybody who's looked at this project agrees that the building that is currently at 300 South Broadway should not be torn down unless this project is 100% a-go, meaning it's got permits for, building permits pulled and financing in place for the construction. Because the last thing we want to see is more surface parking in our downtown central business district. So just to, I guess, reiterate, this is a redevelopment plan calling for a 20-year tax abatement of which it's a 90% abatement for the first 10 years, an 85% abatement for the next five years, and an 85, an 80% abatement for the final five years. Currently, as I said, there are no taxes paid by the property there now. It's owned by a government entity. So it will be on the tax rolls, obviously assessed at, you know, its value as a 33-story tower versus the building that exists today. I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize.
So on this, and I've received letters because it's a viable building that's there. The issue is, first, I've received letters from people saying they don't want the building torn down that's there. And apparently, there's still questions, you know, whether or not they're going to be able to tear that building down or if they're going to have to save a piece of it to do it. The other thing is the amount of tax abatement. 90% for the first 10 years, 85% for the next five and another 80% after that. That's a really large, considering that one of the things that I get beat up on regular and I see Chris over there in the corner here on stories about tax abatements and SIDS and, you know, people have been emailing me on this saying, and I voted against a couple of them that came up on perfection. And I'm still voting against this because the perception is that we're giving away the city with all these tax abatements and TIPS. And I will still stand on my, I'm not going to worry about asking questions, but I will stand on my no vote because I can tell you my constituents are absolutely opposed. And I get letters, emails, phone calls, I got some that I have on my phone right now that, you know, and again, you got Channel 2 News here because they want questions on some of the stuff coming up. I'll stand on my no vote. I'm not going to worry about asking questions. But I do think that there's been a very strong statement out there about all this stuff. I did ask the sponsor to put it on the informal calendar so that I could look better into this. Maybe I can get more answers, but he's choosing not to. I will not be voting for this.
All right. Any further, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think there are a number of considerations with this bill. I would start out, I think perhaps most importantly, most relevant to what we do here is the fact that just a few months ago, Board of Aldermen passed Resolution 33, which went through the HUD's committee, which was all about development incentive reform. And I'm not going to rehash everything that is in that resolution, but I think the pertinent part for today is that the idea was we were going to dial back incentives depending on market strength. And in fact, maybe we would try to dial back incentives overall. And I don't think that this bill really jives with what we said we were going to do in Resolution 33. Why doesn't it jive? Because it's got a 20-year tax abatement. 20-year tax abatement, as we all know, is a long period. It's longer than even some comparable high-rise apartment buildings that have been built in recent years, which were either 10 or 15 years. The point of the resolution was not to say anything goes. It was to say we're going to provide some constraints when it comes to tax incentives. There's not a lot of product like this in the city or downtown, particularly downtown luxury buildings. Nevertheless, 20 years is a long time. And the idea that the projects that get the longest period of tax abatement are luxury projects, I think as Alderman from the twenty-third said, is a little disturbing for a lot of residents and voters in the city. Moreover, you know, I think downtown is important. And I think what this building and this bill does is kind of highlights what I see as a distinct lack of planning that's been going on downtown. So there's no land use plan for downtown. So all these, when projects happen, we just consider them on a one-off basis without any connection to, you know, the whole. So here we have a building that is in fact a viable building. It's had a tenant recently. In fact, it's a pretty nice building. The architecture of Busch Stadium is partially based on this building. So 12 years ago, we thought it was important enough to copy right across the street. But today, it's not important, so we can tear it down. Now, there are a lot of low-productivity land uses downtown. There's surface parking lots, there's vacant parcels. I think we'd feel a lot differently about this if this apartment tower was replacing a surface parking lot or a vacant parcel. But the built environment is important, and without a land use plan, you get this hodgepodge and there's no coordination. Now downtown has capacity for planning. The Downtown Inc., their budget is roughly $3 million a year. They have capacity that quite frankly, most of us don't have. I have no access to planning. If I need planning, I got to pay for it through my world capital budget. So to me, this highlights the fact that there should already be a land use plan for downtown. This stuff, they should have gone through, building by building, said which buildings are, were determined to keep? Which parcels are available for redevelopment or new construction? This maybe wasn't as important in the past because, you know, most of the development downtown has been based on historic tax credit eligible buildings. Thankfully, the supply of those is diminishing now after 20 years of the historic tax credit program. And maybe there's going to be more demand for new construction downtown, which would be good. But that means we need a land use plan because we don't want to be demolishing historic buildings and leaving unproductive land uses like surface parking lots literally on the same block. That's not, that's not the way to get the best, most vibrant downtown. And lastly, you know, I don't think we have fully embraced how frustrated this makes a lot of voters. I walked, I'm not going to name him, but a week or two ago, I walked into a store owned by an entrepreneur who owns a number of businesses in the city, all of which are highly regarded and contribute, I think, a lot to the cultural and social fabric of the city. And the business owner, you know, looked at me and he's just like, what are you guys doing? He's like, I do all these, I do all these projects. I'm like a small-time guy. I'm a, like, a small-time guy, but I've taken buildings that were vacant, I've invested my own money with no incentives ever. And, you know, yes, maybe I get like a pat on the back, but I don't get anything like the, you know, white glove treatment that projects like this get. And, you know, his attitude is like, if you're rich, you get special treatment. If you're a regular guy on the ground, you don't. And I just think that if we don't, if we can't, if, if we say we're doing incentive reform, but then the first project that is, you know, a big shiny project, it looks good, sure, we want a new high-rise apartment building downtown. But if we can't stick to what we just said a few months ago, then incentive reform is not real. And it needs to be real because the public is demanding that it be real. So for that reason, I'm going to vote against this bill. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd?
I just want to add to what the Alderman of the 24th said over there. In the, in the 23rd ward, we just built Chick-fil-A, mobile on the run, we've had millions of dollars. The Phillips 66 is going to expand, and we have done no tax abatement. In nine years, I did one, and it made the post. A lot of areas do not need, the tax abatement was meant for depressed areas. I hardly see downtown as that depressed area.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 25th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've voiced my concerns about this previously, so I'm not going to belabor the points of my colleagues that have already been made. But I do, you know, for the purposes of public consumption, just want to make known, you know, it's very rare for me as an Alderman to get emails from constituents with regard to developments in other neighborhoods and parts of the city. And this is a particular project where I think, you know, the interest of the public is, you know, certainly in our downtown region and in the neighborhoods in which they live. But this is a historic building, and it's, you know, I think upsetting to a lot of people that we would consider providing tax incentives to tear down a historic structure in our downtown area when, in fact, there are surface parking lots just adjacent to that parcel as well. So I rise again, you know, to express my displeasure and opposition to this bill.
Any further discussion? Any further, Alderman from the 1st?
Alderman from the 7th, would yield?
Alderman from the 7th will yield to Alderman from the 1st. Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Alderman, so you already know this was historic. Did this already go through the historic review and everything like that?
Yes, so a year ago, prior to this project, even, you know, when it was just a concept, the first stop was to the Cultural Resource Office, who did some digging on the building. The building is, I don't know what year it's from, but it was by Isaac Taylor, who is an architect in St. Louis, who's done a number of buildings, including the Muni Courts next door, which is slated for redevelopment, and the LaSalle Building, which is currently being redeveloped over there on Olive. The, the Cultural Resource Office recommended the demolition of this building for, to be replaced with this project. And the caveat from the Cultural Resources Office was, you've got to have building permits in place and financing in place before the demo. Then it went to the, so that was the Cultural Resources Office recommendation. Then we went for a preliminary review to the Preservation Board. The Preservation Board approved the demo with further conditions regarding trying to save the facade of the existing building and some additional glass. So after this, if we are successful and able to pass this today, we actually are going back to the Preservation Board to discuss those, the proposed changes that the Preservation Board requested, and to seek the demolition permit at the end of this month.
And can you tell me, why did the Cultural Preservation Board recommend demolition? Can, do you know? What was their reason for that? Because often, they don't.
Right, no, yeah, they, often they don't. Obviously, I represent many historic districts, McKinley Heights, Soulard, Lafayette Square, where we rarely if ever tear down buildings. So this building, while it's a high merit building by an architect, their recommendation was based on the fact that this architect has a number of buildings already downtown that have been preserved. And while this is a high merit building, it's not on the National Register, nor is it in a historic district.
Oh, it is not in a historic district?
It is not. It is a preservation, it is a demolition review district or a preservation review district, but not, downtown is not a historic district.
And do you know, how old is the building?
I don't know offhand. It was built in, well, I can say, I think it was the late 1800s.
And so...
But if I could add, sorry, a portion of the building. So the building is actually, the corner of it, the, I guess, southeast corner of the building is the historic feature. And then there is a 1980s building that wraps around it, that is made to match the building. So it does look like one building, but half of it is from the 80s.
And so you have a plan design that would keep the front facade and part of the side is that?
So the, the engineers on the project, and we actually, the developers hired outside engineers to explore that after the Preservation Board asked for trying to save the facade. So they went back to the drawing board, looked at that. It's estimated it would add $8 million more to the project. And in an effort to shore up the facade, you would lose, right now, the building's about one-to-one parking, which the code requires. You'd lose, I don't know, it was like 50 to 60 parking spaces. So that, that proposal's not going to be feasible, which is why we're going back to the Preservation Board to make our case for, look, we explored this, but it can't be done.
So what if the Preservation Board then says, no, we've already passed this board bill, so it seems like we're kind of putting pressure on the Preservation Board to go along with what they have made a compromise to you with?
Well, I, I would say that if the Preservation Board doesn't approve the demo, then I, then I would guess the project's dead in the water.
And this is going to be a parking lot, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
Is this parking, or is this the building and parking? Is that what?
We're proposing a $100 million, 33-story building. So it would be, it would have nine...
And so when you're talking about losing the parking, it was about, you were going to lose part of your parking for the...
In the building, correct, correct. Because the building's structured, it's like, the first nine floors are a parking deck, and then the apartments are above that.
So I'm prejudiced, I want to tell you, because I believe in, I'm with the landmark, so I'm going to vote present on this one, okay? That's going to be where I'm going to be.
Fair enough. Thank you, Alderman.
Any further discussions? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just, before I move for my vote, I'd, I'd like to speak to some of the comments of the Alderman from the 24th, specifically as it refers to downtown planning, where I couldn't agree more with, with his comments about downtown planning and the need for more of it. Years ago, downtown started a process to do a, sorry, what do we call it? A form-based code. And that unfortunately sort of fizzled out. It is something we are now restarting after seeing the success of the process in the 17th ward. It's something that we desperately need downtown. I mean, we, we see a demand to build buildings in certain parts of downtown, specifically in the southern part, where we have lots of surface parking and underutilized buildings. And so we are moving forward with that process. It's going to take a while, it's going to take a couple of years. And, you know, in the interim, I, you know, I can't put development on hold downtown, especially when folks are willing to make significant investments and bring more residents into our downtown districts. But I take his comments seriously, and it's something we've been talking about with the downtown community improvement district, and we are moving forward with the form-based code plan. So with that, I would ask for your favorable consideration of Board Bill 250, and I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second by Alderman from the 19th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 250. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. I didn't, I didn't hear that. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy.
Madam Clerk, make note of that change.
Seventeen, I vote eight, no vote, two, present.
By a vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 7th, and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 250.
Board Bill Number 240, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Oldenburg, and ordinance providing for and directing the submission to the qualified electors at a special bond election to be held on the 7th day of August 2018 of a proposal for the incurring, incurring of indebtedness and the issuance of bonds, said city and evidence thereof in aggregate amount not to exceed $50 million upon the assent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on third read and final passage of Board Bill Number 240 as amended.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to pass our Board Bill 240 as amendment.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 25th, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just briefly. All right, Board Bill 240 as amended is a $50 million obligation bond that we're trying to pass. Now, that would be placed on the August 7th election, providing that we pass it today on the floor. Now, this bond is no cost to the residents of the city of St. Louis, so this is an obligation bond, and it will cost the, the city, the residents, no money. And just to kind of give you a breakdown on the allocation and earmark of the money, 14 million of this money will be going to the fire department to replace approximately 26 vehicles with the fire department. Now, they won't replace those vehicles all at one time, so they'll be replaced one-third at a time through the years. So the cycle of those vehicles basically run about 10 years. So they will phase them in, phase them out over several years. Because if we replace them out at the same time, then they're going to go old and bad at the same time. Also, we have, within that 14 million, there'll be some operation equipment purchased. Then 1.7 million will go to the firehouses throughout the city of St. Louis, replacing roofs of different engine houses in the city of St. Louis. And they'll replace station generators, too. Now, the first responders will receive 1.6 million, mainly the police, and those are for the handheld radios that they have, walkie-talkies. Those radios that we presently have right now are about eight to nine years old. They're being phased out. Motorola has came up with new technology. The equipment that we presently have with the first responders, they don't make those models anymore. So it's very important that we purchase new handheld radios for the first responders. And they'll have the capability of communicating with St. Louis County and St. Clair County and also Madison County, Illinois. So that's very important to replace those radios. 1.3 million will be for renovation of a building that is the home of the property custody building for the police department, and it'll be also the headquarters of the SWAT team of the police department. The correction department will receive 6.5 million, mainly the medium security, which we call the workhouse. They will receive, they will receive numerous repairs on plumbing, shower, toilets. They will upgrade their surveillance cameras, replacing the sprinkler system, replacing boilers. And they will receive a new air conditioning system that will be replaced or will be installed. Because presently, right now, the workhouse does not have HVAC air conditioning system. So as you know, last year, when the summer got hot, and we had a lot of prisons complaining, and they put that air conditioning outside. Now, providing that this bill passed, that won't be passed, that won't be installed until 2019. So even this year, we'll have to use the, I guess, portable system that they had last Also, juvenile family court will receive some updates and repairs out of that 6.5 million. They will update the HVAC system. Now, the municipal buildings and city hall will receive 4.9 million. Those are repairs throughout all the municipal buildings in the city of St. Louis, including city hall. The accounting system and payroll system, which is a computer system, that'll be 5 million to replace that. Now, we're working on a 40-year-old system right now, so it's in dire need that we replace that system, the computer system, so we can upgrade our business with the city and come into the 21st century, so we can like, we can make less mistakes and expedite and kind of speed up the system with our payroll and other, you know, operations that we have to do when it comes to the computer. Not only that, in 2010, the state has mandated that we replace this 40-year-old system. Next would be the ADA plan, that's the American Disability Act. Now, the American Disability Act plan is 1.5 million. That's where we will have to go through, make it more accessible for disabled people without, throughout the city of St. Louis, curb cuts, make our buildings more accessible for disabled people. So that is also mandated by the federal government. Last but not least, 2.5 million are bridge and over, overpass repairs, replacements and repairs. So with that, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st?
Mr. President, members of the board, with the Alderman from the 26th yield?
Alderman from the 26th will yield to Alderman from the 1st.
Yes.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman, so I heard several mandates in there from both the state and the federal government.
Yes, ma'am.
And so when they mandate, did they put any money to these mandates? Because when you give the cities and states mandates, you're supposed to put that money there for us to, for that to happen.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't think so, but I'm not sure. And I don't know if we received any federal grants or state assistance.
And my next question is...
Especially from the state. I don't mean to interrupt you, because we eight years behind in replacing that computer system. I'm sure, you know, our state didn't give us a dime.
But if they're mandating, they need to put the money right there. Anything that you mandate, put the money there, and it'll get done. So these bond issues, what was the, has the comptroller weighed in on this at all? And what was her response of any at all?
Yes, she's supporting it.
She's supporting it.
Full heartedly. Yes, she is supporting it.
Okay.
And mainly with the computer system, a $5 million computer system.
I know she needs, she needs a new system, so does the treasurer's office. And the treasurer's office had been promised years ago that they, we were going to pay for that, so that she would be on the same system that, but that didn't happen. So you gave out a number of instances of where money was going to be spent. Is that in, is that concrete, or is that fluid, is what I want to know? Because oftentimes, when we pass bond issues and things like that, or we pass taxes, then all of a sudden, the money goes someplace else. And I'll give you an example of, when Greg Carter was here as the 27th Ward Alderman, we passed a low-income house use tax. And a lot of money came out of that that was not expected. And that money goes every place but where it's supposed to go. So, and in fact, I think I see someplace on here, a couple Aldermen has introduced something about how money should be spent, and that it be spent directly. So when you read these things off, is this something that is going to be held accountable to exactly what you're saying, or is this something fluid?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, you know, and you're so correct, we've been playing the shell game down here at City Hall, where the money is kind of moved around. And Alderman Ogilvy, he, he implemented a bill that we passed not too long ago. And Alderman Ogilvie, he implemented a bill that we passed not too long ago, well, the money is really, has to be allocated and earmarked for those specific projects. So...
Right.
That was very helpful, you know what I'm saying? Now...
I think, Alderman, it's on the agenda right now, that's why I saw it. It's not passed yet.
Right.
What I'm suggesting is, I know you need to get this passed out, that we back this up with a bill specifically saying how much money is going to be spent, because I know this has to be passed today. But if we're going to do this type of things, then we need to make sure that current and future mayors don't start dipping their toes and their fingers and everything else into the money that's supposed to be spent a different way. Because the other thing I'll tell you is, the money that we give for our wards, we spend that on a lot of things that were not, I was here when that got passed, and we got a lot more money, but now, all of a sudden, we have to pay for the major streets, which the city is supposed to, the dumpsters, which the city is supposed to.
I agree.
So, what happens is, when you pass these things, it end up the next mayor who's used the money for other things then dips into it. So, if we're going to pass this, I want you to be open to coming right back and passing something that, when you're on this floor saying, this is how it's going to be spent, that we make sure it's spent exactly like that.
Yeah, and I'd be more than happy to work with you or any other colleague that would like to place a board bill, that we can really make sure that their money is earmarked specifically for the projects that is being allocated. I think that's only transparent, I think that's fair to the constituents throughout the city, so I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Alderwoman from the 20th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I rise not in opposition of this bond initiative, but to raise concerns. What we have here is a list of items that we really frankly shouldn't be bonding out. I mean, we have deferred maintenance in the form of plumbing repairs, showers and toilets, HVAC upgrades, chillers, these sorts of things, radio equipment that, you know, we're going to be paying for for the next 20 years. This is technology that may not even be relevant in 20 years, and we're using a bond issue to pay for them. Why? Not because this is the wrong thing to do, but because we don't have any other way to pay for the basic needs of our city. This is a bond issue of a city in very dire financial, a very dire financial situation. Make no mistake about it, this is a sad day for me to vote for this, because it is the only way we have to pay for these upgrades. And I want to, we've got to look at this as a real stark reminder that we've got to start reining in some of these incentives, we've got to start really paying very close attention to how we are spending our money down here. We've all had budget meetings in the last couple weeks, we all know that we are going to face a very serious shortfall. We're looking at potentially a $14 million budget gap. This is on top of the $17 million budget gap we had last year. And when we have to use bond money to pay for basic general maintenance, this is an unfortunate way to get things done around here, and this is a real wake-up call, I'm going to vote for it. I applaud the sponsor and, both the sponsors and the folks kind of going through and making sure that we're addressing the most pressing needs of that bond issue that didn't pass several years ago, and I understand that these are very, these are very pressing needs, but this perhaps is not the most fiscally responsible way to pay for these things, and that's all I have to say.
All right, Alderman from the 23rd.
I actually agree. You know, we sit here and we do these, which we just did, which actually takes millions of dollars away from the city, and the only other way we can make money now is to go to the voters, which potentially could turn this thing down, because they're tired of being taxed, even though it's no increase, it's also no decrease. So, I do support this, but I think we really need to take a hard look at what we're doing.
Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I obviously rise in support of this, and I might just try to give some clarity to some of the comments that have been made. I certainly sympathize with the sentiment. I think it's Finance 101 that you don't want to have a 20-year term on an asset that has a life cycle of five or 10 years. So, to address that, these were questions that the Capitol Committee, that both myself and Alderman Williamson sat on, these were questions that were asked and scrutinized, and the answer to that is that we are not doing that. When the, when the bond gets passed by the voters and they're putting together, it can either be bifurcated into different series, or what you can do is a blended or weighted amortization schedule that allows you to manipulate the principal and interest you paid throughout the term of the loan, so that you create more of what is akin to a rolling stock finance, so that we know that we're not paying 20 years on a 10-year piece of equipment, because we're paying more principal and interest upfront on that, and you get to, you get to a weighted average amortization line or schedule. So, that is, that is a concern. I mean, I think that's the perception that we have to educate the voters on, that there's an ability through, through the amortization schedule to make sure we're not wasting money or carrying interest in too many out years. I will close with saying that I support this, and I hope that you all will as well, and that we allow the voters to take a vote on a no-tax increase bond initiative for long-term equipment that we need, because this is going to do two things at the end of the day in a simple summation. This is going to actually help the city's credit rating, it's going to help the city's credit rating, because we are going to extinguish long-term operating maintenance and costs, and we have a dedicated source, a non-tax increase, but it's a dedicated source. The credit rate, the credit rating agencies enjoy those two features, and I often think this is fiscally sound. Granted, I, I think when we're ready for real capital improvements, I think that's a discussion that the Capitol Committee will source or originate, and we will keep all the Aldermen and our voters in mind when we do that.
All right, thank you, Alderman. We also have our recorder deeds here, Sharon Carpenter, let's give her a round of applause, thanks for joining us today. Alderman from the 25th.
President, I, I too, you know, want to express some concerns with this. You know, I seldom vote against anything when it comes to allowing our constituency to vote, so in that regard, I will be voting yes on this bill, because I do believe that we should allow our voters the opportunity to vote on these types of financial decisions. That being said, you know, the list that I believe I circulated last week or the week before in terms of the capital expenditures that are being, you know, paid for by this, while there are certainly some that are very merit-worthy, you know, I think that there are some that, given the priorities of the city and the direction of our city, that we need to reevaluate, and I won't belabor the board with the details of that, but I do believe that, you know, I look forward to having those conversations with our budget director and others and E&amp;A and elsewhere to ensure that we're addressing, you know, not only the needs of the city, but our citizens as well. And so, that being said, you know, I will be supporting this, because I do want my voters the opportunity to vote on this and have their voices heard, but, you know, I do have concerns around how we're doing this and what we're doing with the money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, the Alderwoman from the 20th made some very good points about bonding and long-term solutions, and about that we're just doing the most pressing things. We're not doing day-to-day things that we should do, so that they don't become so pressing. So, I want to remind everyone that there is $6 million that is going to be freed up very soon, because we're going to be finished paying for our convention center football stadium. Now, they already have plans for that, which does not include coming back here to pay for things that we need. So, when that $6 million comes up, this is our chance to make sure that instead of it goes back to the convention center, because I'm one of the people that was here when they made these promises, and now they want to put it back into the convention center, that we say that we need this money for some of the things that maybe not as pressing as in this bill, but that will be used to pay for some other things that we need in our community, so that people get the basic services that they're supposed to. So, we have $6 million a year coming from our general revenue in like a year or so that will be available. Let's not commit that fund to something else, let's commit that fund to doing some of these other things that we need to get done. Thank you.
Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President, I won't be very long. I just, I do want to make note, because I think it's pertinent and relevant, but, you know, we constantly bring up the urgency and immediacy of these capital improvements. When the very building that we're standing on and deliberating, you know, the last time we had a discussion about bond issues, we had water falling into the chamber. You know, last week, when this came out of committee and was, you know, second read before this board, you know, I was amazed at how bright the hallways were, because we finally had enough money to, you know, replace the light bulbs in city hall. You know, I mean, it's pretty surreal sometimes that we're down here talking about, you know, extending out, you know, bond indebtedness, even though it's not a tax increase, but we're not doing the basic maintenance needs of the very building, which the seat of government of the city is deteriorating at the same time that we're doing this. So, you know, I just, I have to at least make that point as well with regard to the prioritization of how we're spending money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 26th, you recognize close.
Yes, Mr. President, appreciate all the comments from our colleagues. I agree with a lot of things they have said, but if we could really be more creative in generating more revenue with the City of St. Louis, I'm all for it, and I'm sure they are too. So, we're open to any ideas that they may have when it comes to the ways and means of this upcoming budget with the $14 million deficit, so please chime in if you want to be very supportive in solving some of the problems that we have, and we can kind of alleviate down the line in the near future. With that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number 240 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvie. Alderman Cole. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Mohammed. Twenty-five, I vote.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the 26th, and third read and finally pass Board Bill 240 as amended.
That's the extended third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills, 206, 213, 223, 229, 230, 238, 247, 212 as amended, 181, 205, 214, 228, 231, 211, 189 committee substitute, 192, 250, and 240 as amended.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. The dispenser line item 21, second read and resolution.
Resolution 220, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Howard, and Alderman Mohammed, Transportation and Commerce Committee, to provide legislative oversight of city exploration of the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Privatization Pilot Program with respect to the St. Louis Lambert International Airport.
Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the second read and the resolution 220.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Resolution number 220 is very simple and straightforward. We know that we have a process that's been put in place above and beyond any desires that we have had here as a Board of Aldermen, and an application was applied to the Federal Aviation, and we have now moved forward in looking at how we could explore the possible betterment of management for the airport. The initial process started off probably not at its best, looking at how to select a consulting firm to do the exploration. Part of this process was somewhat closed towards the end. We took it upon ourselves as Aldermen to attend the last two meetings before the selection was made. We gave our comments for inclusion and to a draft of a contract. Those things have been considered. We also took the opportunity to talk directly with the counselors from the mayor's office as well as the city counselor's office, to make sure that they understood the need for this Board of Aldermen, the Transportation Committee, the Airport Commission, and the public to have transparency. That is the critical part of any process that we do, most especially one that is going to have a lot of difficulty in the process, it's going to be a long-term process, it is not something that's going to happen overnight, it could take as long as two to three years to finish the process, and then there's two more steps after the exploration. So, what has been told to the public thus far is that we have made a decision to sell the airport. I first want to clear that up. We are not allowed by the federal government to sell the airport. We do not have the privilege to sell the airport. The airport cannot be sold by this municipal body or any other body. The other part that has not been cleared to the public is that we are in the process of drafting a contract. The contract has not been finished. We are making very sure that everything that we have in this resolution is in the contract, we're making sure that we have access to the meetings going forward, we're making sure that we have the opportunity to also gauge of how we are implementing the process. A lot of information has been given to the public that also said to the public that an entity, Groh Missouri, is fronting the payment for this process. an entity, Grow Missouri, is fronting the payment for this process, and that is true. But the other part that wasn't told is that there are two other entities involved in this if this contract is approved. So, the two entities that are involved, aside from Grow Missouri, who is really playing a small part in this, cannot make decisions on behalf of this board. So, at the end of the day, Grow Missouri could spend $100 million, but they can't make a decision. Only, only this Board of Aldermen makes the final decision. So, as you know, we have the Airport Commission. It leaves the Airport Commission. It comes to the Transportation Committee. It has to come through the Board of Aldermen, and then it goes through E&amp;A. That entity cannot make decisions on behalf of this body. So, I wanted to dispel that early on. They cannot make decisions on behalf of this body. Also know that in the exploration process, we have a very capable staff at the airport. Any information that is gathered comes from them, comes from their bodies, and any questions that we need answered, we can go directly to our employees to clarify anything we have questioning about. And I'm going to ask the body to be a little bit more...
Have some order?
Thank you.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Because I need the public to be able to hear, and if no one else here wants any information, that's fine, but I'm more concerned about the public. So, the other part to this is, as of today, as we stand here, we have nothing because we have not signed a contract with the Exploration Committee yet that has been chosen. We have not signed a contract yet. Once that contract is finished, then it goes to the Board of E&amp;A. So, we haven't had a vote on a contract yet. If we don't get two votes at E&amp;A, the process stops. There is nothing else to go forward. If we get two votes, then the process moves forward. If at the end of this process, we determine that we would like to then explore through a RFQ, who has qualifications out here to manage an airport, again, that same process takes place, and if we don't get the votes to move forward, then we don't. Every step of the way, this body has to vote. I don't understand anything else. If you look at our ordinances, it says nothing else, and if you look at who we have been working with, which is our Airport Commission, the Transportation Committee, the Mayor's Office, the Board of E&amp;A, out of all of that, at the end of the day, this board will have to vote. This board will have to vote. I can talk about Grow Missouri in many different forms and fashions, but I won't because that's not going to change anything that has happened thus far, nor will it dilute the opportunity for us to investigate. And in this investigative mode, the only thing that is required of us is what we are supposed to be doing every day, and that's to be present and vigilant. If we are present and vigilant in the process, how could we then question anybody else in what they're doing? Because we will be a part of the process. If for some reason, we find that we are not getting correct information, if we're not being included in a timely manner, and we've got, we've got some rules in here that we weren't followed, minimum rules that we weren't followed, and as we go forward in this process, we may determine that we may need to even change those. Again, this body, this body has the power to do that. And so, one of the things that has bothered me in the last two or three weeks is how irresponsible we have been with our citizenry. We have given them bad information. We have given them reasons to not trust. We have done all those things which were wrong to do. And if you at least sit down and take time to have conversations and explore information, then you can share it appropriately so. But when you just want to tag it and move it forward for specific private agendas, it is wrong. It is wrong, and I'm tired of it. And I probably, if I want to get this voted out here, I probably shouldn't say it, but at the end of the day, the public is who I'm concerned about. Because you know, what we've been doing lately is, we've been using the City of St. Louis like it's a volleyball, like we're on a playground, and we're trying to see who's going to win. And let me volley over here, and I've got my game together one way, and I'm going to use your game and flip it so you can lose. Well, that's not how you govern. That's not how you serve people. You serve people with facts. You serve people with information that's going to empower them to also, to also be able to make some decisions to give you good feedback. So, here I am standing here today, asking for support on this resolution, but I definitely, definitely know that this process is controlled by this body at the end of the day. So, I move for passage of Resolution Number 220.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 14th. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 20th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to ask the Alderwoman from the 19th to yield.
Alderwoman from the 19th, will you yield? She would not yield, so please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. My question was simply going to be, who wrote this resolution? Was it our counsel here at the Board of Aldermen? Was it outside counsel? Because it certainly reads to me like it was written by an airport consultant. And if the Alderman from the 19th doesn't want to answer that question, I will continue on. I'd like to talk about the timeline here because many of us were not down here when this process started, and many of, and this body wasn't included when the process started anyway. Back in early 2017, one of the last acts of our leaving mayor was to apply for the Airport Privatization Pilot Program in March of 2017. Now, let me remind this, that we are the legislative body here. It is our duty and our elected responsibility to be the checks and balances for our government, to provide a level of oversight. And as you all know, we okay the majority at all contracts that go through the City of St. Louis that involve the exchange of money. But when there's a loophole, there's a loophole involved here. The City of St. Louis contracted with Grow Missouri to act on the city's behalf to apply for the Airport Privatization Program, completely sidestepping the Board of Aldermen by using a provision that the city councilor's office can hire direct counsel to the city councilor's office without a public meeting, without any public oversight, and certainly without the involvement of this Board of Aldermen, and that's precisely what happened. Grow Missouri was contracted to provide counsel to the city councilor's office without our approval whatsoever, and Grow Missouri, on the city's behalf, applied for the Airport Privatization Pilot Program, and we were accepted. The second time this body was sidestepped, we thought, okay, we're going to get a contract to consult with how to move forward. But guess what? If we don't exchange money, if there's no money exchanged, the Board of Aldermen doesn't have to approve that contract, which is precisely the contract that we are drawing up right now. Grow Missouri not only applied for us to be part of the program, but they wrote the RFP that they then are scheduled and was, it was recommended by our Airport Selection Committee that they get. Bad information to the public, that accusation is really unfortunate because it isn't this body that's providing information to the public. As you see on your desks, our Post Dispatch, our St. Louis American, numerous publications have been reporting on the conflicts of interest associated with this process at this time. Our general public is outraged by this process so far, and they should be. A resolution that states that undertaking this due diligence allows the city to fully and independently evaluate current airport operations and finances, this is an insult to what the Board of Aldermen's job and our responsibility as elected leaders of our city should be. There are inherent conflicts of interest have been, have been reported numerous times already inherent in this process. Moving forward with meetings every 60 days to have an update on where we're moving forward from a process that has been flawed from the very beginning is putting lipstick on a pig, and that is exactly what we're proposing to do today. This is an insult to transparency. It's an insult to our public, and it's an insult to the process that may actually be good. We should objectively look at privatizing the airport. We should objectively look at improving air, our aviation assets here in the City of St. Louis. We have the state's largest airport in Lambert International, and our region is lucky to not just have one airport, but we have three airports here in the St. Louis region. We have two international airports with Lambert International and Mid-America on the Illinois side. We talk a lot down here about regionalism and creating regional plans and having a regional plan to move this whole St. Louis region forward. But taking one of those three airports out of the equation and putting it in the hands of a private investor for the foreseeable future is a complete, the complete opposite of regionalism. This will hold us back as a region. Our airport, we have a rich aviation history here in St. Louis. Lambert International is the first municipal airport this country had, the first one, okay? And the city invested in its future by passing a bond issue, much like we did today, to build the airport's infrastructure. We have a lot of our city's rich history, our financial history, our forefathers' investment here in this facility. And of the 457 municipal airports nationwide, St. Louis International, Lambert International, was the first. And because of that, we were grandfathered into a program which allows our city to enjoy a very generous amount of income from our airport. Almost $7 million a year comes from Lambert into our general revenue fund, and if we contract with a private entity to run our airport, that grandfather clause that one of 12, 12 out of the 457 airports nationwide enjoy, is out the window. And I'm not saying that we can't make more money off of the airport, but what I am saying is that this is a big gamble. This is a big choice, and we should not take it lightly, and we should do it with objectivity.
Alderwoman, please state your point of...
Transparency, we are not on top... Point of order. This resolution has nothing to do with the privatization contract. It has to do with process and procedure, and that's all. We are not discussing privatizing the airport today. This is simply a resolution that gives us the opportunity to be a part of a process. This is, we are not talking about a bill that privatizes the airport today. That is not the issue. This resolution is not talking about. This resolution is only referring to process.
All right.
For a specific process.
And the process stinks.
Have a bill before us today to privatize the airport?
Madam Clerk, only have one mic on at a time. Only the person that I've recognized on the floor should have that mic on. So, please proceed.
We don't have a bill before us today to privatize the airport. Resolution 220 is simply talking about the process and procedure for this legislative body to have oversight of a process that has been started by the executive branch, and that's all we're talking about. Now, if somebody wants to put a bill in place to stop that process that started by the executive branch, fine, but I don't, that, that's my point of order.
So, your point of order is that the subject matter that's included in the resolution, you would like to Alderwoman to stick to that subject matter. Alderwoman from the 20th, please stick to the subject matter that's within the resolution and to the points that Alderwoman from the 19th have raised related to that resolution.
Mr. Pres...
And that's the process, and please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be happy to stick to the topic of providing legislative oversight to the exploration of the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Privatization Pilot Program, which I believe I have done and will continue to do. So, again, the process that we have seen, this is a, this is an exploration, this is a legislative oversight. Let me remind everybody here that the process thus far stinks, okay? This body has been sidestepped every step of the way so far. We are a year, over a year in, okay? And the general public is outraged. I'm outraged. I think that we should give this proposal a good look, but we're never going to get there when we have gross conflicts of interest associated from the very, very beginning unless we have a resolution that removes the conflicts of interest from the process so far and sets forth a path of transparency and a collaborative effort between the Board of Aldermen, the general public, and the airport leadership, who's been left out so far pretty much from the entire process so far. I see that it is an insult to what our responsibility is down here at the Board of Aldermen to move forward, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Alderman from the, from the 24th, and then you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I suppose the resolution is better than nothing as process goes, but I'm not comfortable with it because this process is so messed up and the people involved are so untrustworthy that we should not be trying to improve the process at this point when it's already completely broken. We ought to just say enough is enough. Let's remind ourselves about Rex Singfield. Who is Rex Singfield? Rex Singfield is the guy, in all of his wisdom, who, by the way, when was the last time you saw him at City Hall come and actually talk to somebody? Come and, come and discuss his initiatives with the residents of the city or with the elected officials of the city. He's never says anything in public, right? It's always through mega donations and closed-door meetings. That's the only way he communicates. So, what do we have because of Rex Singfield? We have, every, every police officer's pension is now on the line because of Rex Singfield. Every firefighter's pension is now on the line because of Rex Singfield. Every city employee's pension is now on the line because of Rex Singfield. The city's credit rating is been lowered because of Rex Singfield. Why? Because we have to vote on reauthorizing the earnings tax every five years now. If one of those votes, and he campaigns to get rid of the earnings tax, spends his own money to get rid of the earnings tax in St. Louis. If that ever happens, the city will go bankrupt overnight. Overnight, the city will go bankrupt. So, why, for the love of God, are we trusting that same person to advise us on financial matters related to the airport when he has set the ball rolling to bankrupt the City of St. Louis? This is pure insanity to have this person running this process, and we ought to say no. We ought to say no, not make, not, Grow Missouri is, is Grow Missouri in the resolution? Well, this is clearly a resolution about, about leasing the airport, about privatization, and the person running that program is Rex Singfield. It started with Rex. It started with him with the idea. It started with the past administration going to the FAA to discuss it. Now, Grow Missouri is involved in the financial analysis. This is not an independent, we're going to figure out what is in the best interest of the residents of St. Louis. This is a guy who has an outcome already predetermined, which is why he's funding this process. We don't know what his motivations are, but I'm sick of it. Nobody in this, I don't trust Rex. Nobody in this city should trust Rex Singfield, and why are we putting him in charge of another, of something else so important to the future of the city? It's crazy.
Any further discussion? Now, I'll ask everybody, again, this is about the... Now, I’ll ask everybody, again, this is about the process as the Alderman from the 19th has stated. So, keep your comments, Jermaine, about the process that’s outlined within the resolution. Alderman from the 23rd.
So, actually, I agree with, which is odd, with everybody. And I understand what the Alderman Davis is trying to do. We have a system, whether we like it or we don’t like it, where E&amp;A, there’s a big, a group that goes out and actually confers its three, kind of at large, one from the president of board and one from the comptroller’s office that goes out and does this. You’re right on a lot of things. This that’s going on with Grow Missouri will not come back to the Board of Aldermen. That’s a fact. We cannot bring that back here. All those negotiations that were pointed out to us are done in private, and we have no say. Now, and I don’t understand that, but I get, that’s the process. The selection committee put this together. I support the resolution because it’s, again, better than nothing, but I also know there’s no way that I can think of that they can get around us with or without this resolution because it’s still going to have to come down to, the airport commission would have to approve any changes at the airport over three years, that the Board of Aldermen has to approve any changes to that airport over, anything over five years. This is similar to the water department. I don’t see it getting through the Board of Aldermen, but certainly we’ll listen and see what they have to say. We have no way of stopping this process as it is. Now, if somebody wants to put a board bill together to do away with E&amp;A and that process and get it to the voters, then that’s how you change this process. Whether you like the process or not, it’s the only one that’s there and we can’t really change it. They put a selection committee together, that selection committee, well, now, RFP goes out. A selection committee picks that group, and no matter what we think, either way, that’s the system. And, you know, Alderman of the 24th Ward, who’s also my neighbor and friend, I agree 100% with everything you said. But if we’re going to stop that the same way we did the water department, it’ll get stopped here through legislation at the Board of Aldermen. We’re not going, unless this is the deal of the century, no matter who’s presenting it. You know, it’s up to us to make a decision if it’s a good deal or a bad deal. Certainly with the group that’s in there, it brings a lot to, I don’t think there’s one person in this room that says, gee, you know what, I don’t like this particular group, but it’s the system. And unfortunately, unless somebody could educate me, I don’t know how we stop that system unless we do away with the Board of E&amp;A, which would have to go to the voters. So, I support this only because it’s better than nothing, but I can tell you, even without the resolution, there’s so many stopgaps in there that at any point, we can actually stop the process. And at any point, if the Board of Aldermen, we can’t, we’re not going to be able to stop, put one on in a selection committee. But, and again, I was insulted by the city attorney or the assistant city attorney coming down saying, well, it’s secret. And you really, you really can’t, we can’t tell you. It’s a secret. That we’re not trusted to keep a secret. We did say we would like at least the president, the head of the transportation, Marlene, that she could at least sit in. They never said she can voice an opinion, but at least she could sit in. We also said we’d like this to come back, and even if we have to go into closed session. But the bottom line is, we have no say, and it will not be coming back to the Board of Aldermen as far as who got the RFP. And the only way you change the system, put it on a ballot, do away with E&amp;A. And so, I support this because, again, isn’t the best deal we got going? The best deal we got going is that we actually have laws that will prohibit it, but I will support this because it’s better than just doing nothing.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to second the question from the Alderman from the 20th. I would really like to know who actually wrote this resolution because it does very much read like one of the special interests pushing privatization wrote this. One of the words that sticks out to me quite a bit throughout this resolution is the use of the word due diligence. This resolution is intended to save face for us at the Board of Aldermen. It’s making it to appear like this will be some kind of trans, some kind of process that is transparent, but it is far from it. Because if we talk about who will actually be doing this due diligence that is outlined in this resolution, the due diligence is going to be done by Grow Missouri. The due diligence is going to be done by the organization that wrote the application to the FAA. The due diligence is going to be done by the organization who wrote the RFP. The due diligence is going to be done by the organization who then is getting granted the RFP if E&amp;A votes on, to approve this. Frankly, this resolution here is just a smokescreen. It is there to make it seem as though this is going to be some kind of transparent process where we are actually weighing all of our options, but that is not the case of what we’re doing. If we actually were serious about studying airport privatization, what we would be doing is looking at all the options. We wouldn’t be looking at a predetermined conclusion, which is what this does. So, I rise in opposition to this because I think that we’ve started a process that is flawed from the beginning. Any information that we get going forward is flawed information. It’s information we can’t trust. It’s information that is, that if we use it to make decisions, we will be making bad decisions, uninformed decisions, simply because the people who are charged with this due diligence have an agenda. And so, I hope that we don’t approve this. I hope that we, as a board, come together to figure out how we stop this process. I think that there were a number of concerning things that the deputy city councillor talked about in committee yesterday with regard to how we could get around unions if this goes through. The fact that this has been very closed doors, the fact that Grow Missouri has been involved in every single step of the process to set this up for their own benefit, and that needs to concern all of us. So, I asked my colleagues to please vote no on this today so we can go back to the drawing board and start to stop this train that is running down the tracks.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, the attempted privatization of the airport has been going on for a very long time, a very, very long time. Back in the 90s, they started putting more people on the members of our board out there at the airport commission. So, we went from a control ourselves, and we kept adding people. There was an attempt by a state senator who then became, I think, the head of the St. Charles County. He, at that time, attempted to just put so that they would have the majority of the people on the airport commission and talked about, they weren’t going to take it from us, but they were going to just be able to control it. I went on, I went on radio and several other things to talk about that if you take over all my control, that’s called a taking, and then you should pay us for our airport. And we should get some kind of appraisal and pay us the billions of dollars at that time our airport should have been worth, and so that went away. But mayors have been planning this for a long time. So, when I heard last year about what was going on, my first question was, why were we applying for a Federal Aviation Administration privatization pilot program? Where did that come from? If that was such a good idea, I don’t understand things that are such good ideas, why is it kept in secret? A good idea, you want to tell everybody. You want to tell all the Aldermen and everything because, hey, that’s a good idea. Look at what you can do here. And most certainly with the difference of people we have here, you could convince us that that’s a good idea. But instead, what you do is you put people who report directly to the mayor on a committee, and then you vote for it. And then you say, this is already done, and this is where we are. And just to talk a little bit about what happened, originally, when some of this first started to be talked about in 2000, and I don’t know, 16 maybe or 15, the current chair of transportation was the chair, and then the current mayor came in when we switched and took transportation from the current chair. And now, the current chair is the chair again. So, we had a little switching of who was the chair of transportation during that time here down. And so, the current mayor was the chair of transportation. Alderman Cruzon was the chair of transportation when all of this stuff perhaps got started back earlier. So, now, we’re at this point where we had people appointed by the mayor on a separate commission from the airport commission. Why would you do something like that in the first place? The whole point of the airport commission is for us to be represented by a member of our board, a member of the comptrollers and other people. So, then you take a subcommittee of the committee that we already made a subcommittee because there was a time when the Board of Aldermen was in full control of this, and you make a secret committee that only reports to somebody. And I’ve read the documents, and part of their charge was that whoever gets this contract is that they have to recommend, if they want to get paid, that there be a way to privatize the airport. And the reason why they’re looking at these leases is because there’s a little thing that’s a problem if they want to sell the airport. That’s the problem of 20 votes, okay? One of my first things ever addressed down at this Board of Aldermen when I came here was, we gave a 99-year lease to the Slay Company for, because they couldn’t sell it. A 99-year lease for all intents purposes is a sale. So, when you start talking about 75-year leases, you’re really talking about a sale. They’re just finding a loophole to go around it. And what we need to do is close the loophole and not anything that’s over five years or 10 years, it ought to be, take 20 votes. That would stop some of this madness that’s going on here. I don’t understand also why that we didn’t just have hearings in the first place, okay? Even though they were trying to be in secret, to me, this should have gone on a year ago where we would have brought them in here and said, because even though the city councillor represents the mayor, they also represent the Board of Aldermen. In fact, if you read the charter, the first place that it talks about is not the mayor, even though the mayor appoints the city councillor, it is the Board of Aldermen and its members. We don’t press our powers. We give away our powers. There should be no reason why the mayor appointed something separate. That stinks to high heavens, okay? That should not be a separate subcommittee. And now, to try to get behind it, it reminds me of somebody coming to my house and saying, I’m going to paint your house a certain color, and then when I start raising heck about it, then you say, well, wait a minute, we can get behind it, and we can stop it, we can talk about it. We can’t even talk about it because I don’t want the airport privatized. So, that is my position. It has been my position all along. Nobody has ever been able to tell me a good reason why. It is a good reason. People who I know who operate the airport are not in charge, who are not in favor of it. I don’t want to say names, I don’t want to get them in trouble. But you should be able to make the best argument of why that is a good idea. Stop all the cover-ups, stop all the back-room deals, and come and tell us why this is a good idea. I am not going to support this resolution because I believe that, more than just the chair, that the transportation committee in entirety should be the people that they have to meet with. That’s what we have, a transportation committee. And if they don’t want to, if you can subpoena the treasurer of the city of St. Louis, just subpoena the mayor, subpoena all the three people who made those private deals and bring them before the Board of Aldermen, and let’s have open and public hearings and make them talk about this in public. And let’s not go along with anything that is done in the back. Start the process all over, make sure everybody’s informed, let’s not start in the middle of the process and try to take control of it. That’s not a good way to do things when you’ve done secret things. I always tell people, I don’t want to help make the pie or the cake, I want to put the ingredients in because I want to make sure you didn’t put something poisonous in it. So, although I know why the chair might be trying to do this, I really do believe that it is a greater, bigger process that, especially when you’re talking about an airport, should involve many more people than just one to be the oversight.
Any further discussions? Any further discussions? Alderman from 19th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Let me start with, the transportation committee is a committee of the whole. We have started a process to educate our committee. I don’t expect anyone to sit there blindly and go along with anything and vote for something that they have no knowledge or understanding of. So, we have started with our airport director coming in, and it’s open to all Aldermen, all committees are, educating us on how the airport is run, and we’re going down the list on every aspect of it because we want to be knowledgeable. We want to be able to understand and dissect information that comes before us. The second part to that is, we are at the beginning because we’re drafting a contract, and we want to make sure that we are included as part of those who must be a part of the decision-making as we move forward. We also wanted to make sure that the public is going to be a part of it. So, we’re requesting and have requested that there are public meetings done, that there is an informational portal provided where people can go online and look at documents that have been gathered. I mean, the list is just unwieldy because it has to be transparent. Now, for those who want to understand, even if we go through the entire process and it comes to this board, a recommendation to privatize, you got to have 20 votes. And common sense tells you to look at this board. If we don’t want it, it’s not going to happen because you’re not going to get 20 votes. So, at every point I look at this, I know that we do have control. I don’t have any question about we don’t have control. The statement that was made about the councillor saying that there was a way to get around unions, he did not say that. What we were talking about was contracts that are currently in place, would they still have to be honored? He said yes. He also explained at the end of those contracts, it would be renegotiation, and we would probably have to look at what was desired by the employees, and it would be the same process as we use now. Union members were in the room, I met with them afterwards. I will also be bringing in union leaders to talk with my committee. Everybody is welcome again. We will understand how those negotiations take place, we’ll understand their concerns so we can be watching out for that as we move forward. We also had another question that was brought up about selling the airport. And everybody wants to say you can sell the airport. No, you cannot sell the airport. A lease is a lease, and anybody who’s good at putting contracts together, you always put a loophole in your contract where you can get out. And, and, again, if for some reason, any contract is not performing its properly, this Board of Aldermen can bring it forward, this Board of Aldermen can bring investigations, this Board of Aldermen always has the power. So, I don’t want people to believe that someone can just do whatever they want to do out here, and it’s okay because it’s not. My last thing I want to say is that if you don’t want any input, if you don’t want any transparency guaranteed, because at this moment, you are not a part of the process, and you want to be a part of the process. We want to be at the table from this point forward. And even though we didn’t like what happened, and I know I didn’t like it because I took myself up there to those private meetings, and even though I was initially told I couldn’t come in, I just ignored people because I know my rights, and I walked on in there and sat down anyway. But what we have to do is, we have to understand that you take your position, you hold it, and you be extremely responsible in your position. And that is why I wanted to see this resolution come forward. So, it’s clear to everybody. Now, you know what we’ve asked for, you have agreed to do it, and if you don’t, then you go suffer the consequences. It’s real simple. It’s real simple. This board has the power to make a vote. So, I asked, I asked again for support, and I renew my motion.
It’s been moved by the Alderman from 19th, seconded by 14th, that we It's been moved by the Alderwoman from 19th, seconded by 14th, that we adopt Resolution 220. Is there a request for roll call? There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Martin. 18, aye votes, 8, no votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion. Alderwoman from the 19th and adopted Resolution 220.
Sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, ordinance 67794, established that the annual proceeds of a sales tax shall be initially deposited in a city public safety protection sales tax fund and shall be dedicated to and used for various purposes commencing with fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2008, and each fiscal year thereafter.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the second reading Resolution 211.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Resolution 211 is simply the Public Safety Committee reporting back to the full board those programs that have been determined to be funded by the Public Safety Committee for Prop S. Each year, these monies are made available. The committee diligently sits down and reviews the proposals after they've come in. This year, there were 59 proposals. That's more than any year that the Prop S has received proposals from, which made the work a little bit more extensive than in the past. Also in the past, as we did this year, the United Way did help by looking at all of the applications and scoring them and sending it back to the committee. The committee met very diligently and looked through them. And on your desk, you'll see Resolution 211 with the attachment of the 28 programs that are being funded. Out of that, some eight or nine are new programs that have never been funded before. This does not require a vote of the entire board. The decision comes through the Public Safety Committee. However, each year, we do like to report this back, what programs have been funded. That's it, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Lane has unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, the office is closed, President's Day. Tuesday, February the 20th, Neighborhood Development Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday, February 21st, Housing Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers, and that is the last day for introduction of board bills. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the order from the 11th is excused and that's their answer.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, and Alderwoman from the 6th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, February 23rd, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Stand adjourned.